If you read the article in the paper about homelessness and the meeting they had at the city of Daytona Beach, I did get from that article and from talking to some of the council members individually, that the city seems really committed to that alternative. Now whether you think that alternative works or not, I think they appear to be really committed. But I guess I always learned a long time to, committed means committed, which means that if you're going to be committed, you need to be committed. It means to take the lead. Take the lead a lot of times means also where's the money? I was asked if I had any comment, and a couple of council members I talked to said, I should probably bring this up at this time. We maybe asked, it appeared from that article that maybe some ask of us a change in our commitment, and I don't think, I'm not sure, I would not recommend that. In the sense that I think we made a commitment to, in terms of Hearst House, and I think to spend public money on a facility, we were never, we're never going forward with Hearst House without a written agreement that the property belongs to someone else, that there's an operating agreement in place with a party that's going to operate, and a commitment and an overview of operating expenses that don't come from us. I would never recommend spending capital money, one-time money, without that. So even that agreement will be all formally in writing. For example, the property comes to us from the school board, goes to Hum. The only requirement for clawback, and I have to give Mr. Daniels credit for this, is that we hadn't thought about this, is that if for some reason, they decided someday to end that program, and they were going to sell that property. I do think he brought up a really good point we had not thought of, because it's in a residential neighborhood. Say they were going to sell that, some developer came in. In that case, you would be selling it for a profit over what we gave it to for a public purpose. I think we would claw that back and get that money. I think that's a protection for the public. I think it was an excellent idea on his part. But we're very conservative. What I did see, and like I said, I've talked to some of the council members, is that if the city is really interested in doing this, we could sort of modify our agreement in a way that would be directly what we did with Sunrail. In Sunrail, the community wanted that really badly, if you remember. And we were looking for a funding source. There was none. But they wanted it so badly that the council decided they would take the lead. So what we did in that case, is we said, we will take the risk, we'll take the lead, and you passed a covenant to budget, and you said, we will take care of the costs. If we find other revenues to offset those costs, we'll use those revenues. But to make it happen, that's how it happened. The only reason it happened is because we signed a covenant to budget, and we signed the documents, not the community. The county council's responsible for that, for Sunrail's expenditures. That's how it got built. I think if we're being asked to modify this, which we might, we had said basically wanted the same thing. We would put up the capital side if you had a commitment to do that. I guess if the city's really interested in do this, if they would do a contract where they would guarantee they'd own it, they would run it, or find a party to run it, they'd build it, and they would back it, then I guess what you could do is if you, I think it's in keeping with the agreement, we could say that we could reimburse them for the capital cost as they build it. But they would be, they would do basically the covenant to budget, so that if they were trying to get resources from a tax or from the other cities, it would be just like our responsibility. It'd be their responsibility, and that would offset their costs. So I think if they want it that badly, so that there's no misunderstanding, I think as manager, because I was asked, what could I recommend? I could recommend that if they want to take it on, and they'll back it with their budget and their good word, and say that they'll actually own it, they'll construct it, they'll do, they'll work whoever's going to build it, they'll make sure it's built, and they'll guarantee the operating side, then I'd say it's in keeping with other agreements we have. That, in that case, you may want to consider whether you want to reimburse them. It's a way of backstopping what I think they want to do.
Is there, we're going to put a limit on reimbursement?
You'd reimburse up to $4 million.
Okay. I want that on the record.
It's the only way I know to, if there's any modification, that if you want my recommendation, I think that that would be in some ways no different than what we did with Sunrail. We guaranteed it.
Mr. Wagner?
Thank you. Thank you for bringing it up early. I think it was a good move. The, obviously, as the district representative, and I know Joyce and Jason, you're representative of that area as well, I've been taking a lot of heat on this. You know, after the last meeting, when I brought it up to everybody in the discussion, I, that afternoon, after that meeting, I ran into the city manager. First words out were, we're not supporting any sort of facility like that in Daytona, in the core of Daytona Beach. He was nice about it, and he actually kind of laughed. It was pretty funny. And then I spoke to, I heard the mayor, and also another commissioner, and then the next day, Pam Woods literally just beat the death out of me in the paper, which was fun. And I think I've been a pretty good cheerleader to try to do Volusia Safe Harbor, so I'm not sure why I got beat up.
Is that why you've grown a beard?
Yeah, I'm in hiding. I'm in hiding. I actually laughed at this little bag when you said it could be used for something else. I, you know, I thought, well, I'd have the look and all the press I've been getting for something else, it kind of fits. Don't search me, I don't smoke pot. The, but this issue, in all seriousness, this is what I'd like to do, and this is going to be a little, probably a little farther than Jim wants to go. Not money-wise, but I am, I'm growing a little weary of how long this has taken. 250 Beach Street, you know, it's bad. I don't support, obviously, from what I'm hearing, is some council members would like to shut that down and put up a fence. Obviously, I'm not there. I have a different mindset to it. But what I would ask, and I'll just lay it out like this for discussion, I'd like to tell the city commission and have Jim work with, Jim Chisholm, give them, I would like 30 days, but give them 60 days to come up with a temporary fix. We can't handle and Beach Street can't sustain what's going on. So what I would, what I would ask them and look for them to do, is some sort of place for this overflow of homelessness right now. That provides, it could be a field, I think there's some property near the Star Center, some sort of short-term Band-Aid to get us from point A to point B, that has some sort of bathroom, and I'm fine with portalets. We cannot sustain, Beach Street can't sustain what's happening. We put up a fence on 250 Beach Street, in my opinion, it's just going to get worse in a different location. So I'm going to tie, and the good thing is, I can, you don't have to send the letter, I'm going to put this on the record, that if something's not done in 60 days to address that issue, and what I would ask the councils during that 60 days, to not put up a fence, I would ask for that commitment from this council if you can do that. But during that 60 days, if 60 days runs out and there's not sort of, any sort of temporary fix, I'm pulling my support to Volusia Safe Harbor. Complete support's gone. I'm over it. I think they need a temporary fix. I am for Volusia Safe Harbor. I'm committed to doing it. I love your plan of putting them in a position where they can sign off on it and enter into agreement. But unless we stand up as a council and say something has to be done to find some sort of way to relieve Beach Street, because we have been made the enemy of Beach Street, it's just going to continue. So as a person, I'm pulling my support in 60 days. I would prefer, as, I would, I would appreciate the council's support, since it is my district, and Deb, I've supported you in some of your things that you had to deal with, that were fights. As your district, you know, you did it, and you had, you had my support. I'd ask for it on this one. I don't think anything's going to happen unless we dangle that carrot. I'm not asking for a lot. I'd be even willing to, instead of spending the money on a fence, to spend a little money to help them, if it's a piece of property to buy near the Star Center, and I'm not saying it needs to have a roof, I'm not saying it needs to be a tent city, I'm just saying it needs to have some toilets. It's that easy. Portalets. So I don't know where the council is on it. I'd prefer it be a council decision rather than an independent district member that has to, you know, get his butt kicked for it. That's where I'm at. My support's gone in 60 days. The only other thing I can think of is, obviously, we want to tie what Jim's saying, I'm supportive of that. Commitment to me, you know, on the way here, I was listening to the radio in Daytona, which I respect Daytona, I respect their leaders, I'm friends with their leaders, I respect their administration. But a commitment to me, and the radio was saying, you know, Daytona committed to Volusia Safe Harbor, a commitment to me is a commitment to fund or a commitment to guarantee funding. We're committed, because guess what? We committed to funding. That's a commitment. Commit, you know, you're married to it. And I don't think a commitment means anything if you're not. So like I said, I'd like the council's support. If not, I still have my individual support. It's for discussion.
If I can clarify one thing on that, is that I think there are two separate issues, and so I need some guidance. My suggestion on the, on the original one is the Safe Harbor bigger thing. And that was, I think it's, I think I can recommend as a reasonable modification of our position, is if the city comes forward with that kind of guarantee. They're going to take it on, like we did Sunrail, then I think that it would be in keeping with what we said, if we did a reimbursement on the capital side. But this would be no different than our, than our agreement sort of with, that we're going to have with Hearst House. You'd have someone that's guaranteed they're going to own it, someone who's guaranteed they're going to run it, okay? And we would, we'd have a written agreement like that. This other thing, I need guidance from the council, because I think it's important, but it's a different issue. It's the, it's this whole interim, what do you do, because none of these things are going to happen quickly.
Yeah, I mean, let's say Volusia Safe Harbor's a year to two years out. Are we going to continue to have feces on Beach Street? Are we going to continue to get berated in the news? Are we going to continue to have the businesses being disrupted? Are we going to continue to have homeless people living in our jail? Because they're being arrested, we're paying for it. I mean, realize, we fund the jail, we're paying for this. So we can't be blind to the issue. We are funding it. It's just an expensive way to fund it. But it's open, obviously, it's open for discussion.
All right, Ms. Denny?
I will, I am going to make it easier though. I'm going to go ahead and make a motion. It can be modified or it can just fail, but it'll be open for discussion.
Right.
The motion is-
Can you hold off till discussion, Josh, at my request?
Yeah, of course. I'll write stuff there.
I'll let you make the first motion, but if you would just hold off till discussion, I'd appreciate it.
Okay, very well. Ms. Denny, you have the floor.
Thank you. And Josh, I hear you. And in fact, I heard you this morning on the morning drive. It was, it was a good discussion, and you're the front one out there. And it amazes me, sitting in this position as an elected, how the vitriolic conversation comes back at the council, when we're the first ones to put the dollars in. And listening to all this, there comes a time when you stop using adjectives and adverbs and use nouns and verbs. We're at the noun and verb stage. I don't want a motion, I don't want to hear this, I want to see contract language. It's time to come to the table with dollars and funding. That's where we are. Josh, and I agree with you in most of what you said. Here's what I would, why I would ask you to stop. The Star Center put up a red flag for me because we have families out there. I think this is going to be a bad mix geographically, and the Star Center really has nobody out there to advocate, like we do as a council, or the city commission can advocate for them, their area geographically. Star Center really doesn't have an advocate to speak on that. I would put up a red flag with that. I would just-
Location wouldn't be part of a motion, at all. Not at all. Not even in one bit.
All right. And then, as far as Beach Street goes, here's my concern, is I have heard from people, and it's becoming a health, safety, and welfare issue for our employees and citizens using the facility on a regular basis at 250 Beach Street. We now have a responsibility to guarantee the health, safety, and welfare of our employees on a day-to-day basis and the citizens using that facility. I don't think we're there right now. I actually think it's a great idea to fence it. We have to somehow, from our responsibility, exercise due diligence, because if something happens out there, and we've chosen not to do it, then, it's not good, is it, Charles? No. See, Charles says, Charles says no. So the only thing that I would like to be kept on the table is a consideration of fencing off Beach Street for those reasons. But it was also, I think it was your suggestion of opening up the facilities in Votran. During this 60-day period, I would support doing that, as long as we had security there, and there was a time limit on it. So what I, what we're talking about is a temporary fix to a long-term problem, but at least we're coming to the table. And Mr. Manager, with what you're saying in reimbursement, I would agree. But here's what I'm looking for there, too. I'm looking for words like you said with the Sunrail in our conversations. Covenant to budget. I'm looking for legal contract language, not adjectives, not adverbs, strong legal terminology. I want, just in our original agreement, we guarantee for the operational dollars for five years minimum, the reimbursement up to $4 million, and again, capturing the clawback. Those are all contractual legal terms. That, and I think, council, if we set in a perimeter, parameters, something like that, they can fill in the blanks. But I agree, let's come to the table. We said we would do it, let's do it. They have 60 days to perform. The consultant, as I understand, has got his final report out there. So there's nothing more to be said there. It's just action or lack of action and funding. So with that, Josh, I will support your 60 days. I would also strongly consider opening up facilities at Votran. We have to do something, especially if we're going to fence off Beach Street. And I do think that that's a practical application for protection of our citizens and employees. That's my two cents. I'd like to hear what the rest of the council says. Thank you.
Very well. You know, during the past 48 hours, I've been getting the same phone calls. Josh has been getting some good, some bad. The security and safety of our employees and our patrons on Beach Street is a priority, has to be, period, the end. This, the Votran situation there, I just want to, I'm with you on that, Ms. Denny. You know, we need to, we need to do something temporarily. And let's put, give it to the people that have the, the situation's in Daytona, and they need to step up and say, hey, we're going to do something. And they need to do something, and they need to do it within 60 days. And I personally would also join Mr. Wagner in his, his stand against, you know, pulling my support from the Harbor House, or whatever they call it, Safe Harbor. But, you know, at this point, I'm willing to stand with what we said we were going to do. We're going to, we were going to give them the land, we're going to help them with the building, which is basically what we're going to do, and we're going to sign that contract over and say, this is your problem, this is your property, this is your project, you do it. And they've got to have signed-on contractual agreements. They got to take it lock, stock, and barrel. We can't. There's no way we can financially handle that burden over the long period of time. And so, no, I will support that, which is very similar to our originating agreement of land and building with the $4 million capital improvement project money. But you're right, I'm done with this. We've been talking about it for the three and a half years that we've been sitting here together, and it's time for action. I thought we made a very bold step a couple of years ago, when we said, this is what we're going to do, and we laid it on the table. And I expected, honestly, people to say, hey, this is a great idea, let's all get together. And nobody's come to us and said, hey, we're here. Everybody's kind of stepped back. So we've done our part. We've stepped up to the table. We put our money where our mouth is. We stood up for what was right, and now it's their turn. So, yeah, this is a good conversation that I think we needed to have. There's some very good points on it. And yes, I will probably end up supporting Mr. Wagner's resolution here, if it goes along the same manner that Mr. Deneen was talking about earlier. So, Mr. Daniels?
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to congratulate Josh. Josh, you've taken a lot of hits on this, and you have brought this matter front, center in a way that nobody else has, has done. And you are to be congratulated for having done that. I agree with Ms. Denny's that in the, in the short term, the Votran bathrooms ought to be open. I am with Josh, I think, in the idea that I'm a little reluctant to, you know, fence off, maybe let's see how it works. And then if it does need to be fenced off, it does. If it doesn't, then it doesn't. Let's just see how, how things progress over the next 60 days. You know, you put up a fence for something that is a temporary matter. It seems to be a little bit of, a little bit of overkill. The, in talking to people who have been involved in the homeless question for a long time, they seem to, some of them seem to feel that the Safe Harbor is going to be difficult to make work, because it'll be very difficult to get homeless people to stay out there in the middle of the county, and it's in my jail environment, they're just not going to do it. If I were homeless, I don't think I would do it unless it was 20 degrees outside. The, so, you know, you've got that question of whether or not this is really what we should be doing. It may become a moot point, because it's hard for me to see how Daytona is going to be able to afford the financial obligation that would be pressed upon them. And what we really need to be thinking about is, what is step two? Because we don't want to let it slide. Again, in talking to people who are involved, who have been involved in homeless issues, they tend to think that with a restructuring of the, the money, with restructuring of the continuum of care, that what can be done is that a lot of these needs can be addressed, and that they're not being addressed now. It will take additional money, but maybe not as much as, as we fear right now to, to make it work. And, you know, if, if, and I would almost say when, it becomes apparent that this is going to be difficult to pull off, because the money's not going to be there, we need to have a plan in place to, to address the issue. The idea being that it's killing us. It's killing our tax base on the beach side. We've been focused on, on Beach Street, which is bad enough. But, you know, it is killing, it's going to kill the tax base on the beach side with all the homeless people living on the beach and hanging around the Ocean Center. And Ocean Center's lost one contract because of that. They're, everybody who, not everybody, but a large number of people who come to look at the place, mention that as an issue. They're wondering if they're going to come, because we have such a homeless problem around the Ocean Center. It is not something that is palatable. But manager came up with a very good idea, and that was to basically have our security guards outside that, you know, can usher these people back and forth and make them feel good. But, you know, how, you know, do you really want to do that? I mean, that's, that's not really the best solution in the world. You know, if you want to be a tourist area that people want to come to and spend money, do you really want to have to guard your, your visitors? It just doesn't sound reasonable. We need to be looking at and working on what the, the next steps are going to be. We shouldn't just get ourselves in a position and say, well, the city can't do this, well, we're just going to drop the whole thing and move on. It's, it's something we need to address and address as a community. And everybody in the county's got a homeless problem. It's different everywhere. It's one reason why some of the cities didn't want to contribute to Daytona. They don't have the same homeless problem Daytona's got. They've got their own. And it wasn't going to solve their problem, but, you know, we need something a little bit more comprehensive. And, and we need to use all the money that is there to help this issue and use it effectively. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And Ms. Kuzak?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As you all are aware, I too am aware of that homelessness in Volusia County is a growing problem. It gets bigger by the hour. I think that the idea of Safe Harbor, and with its inception, was a good thing, as it had partners from the community, the faith group, and from some cities, particularly those, Daytona Beach. And the land was on board. But no action, no movement, in the case that we are not putting forth the necessary effort, or we don't have the finances as a group to address this on the issue, and in the, in the way that it should be addressed. We agreed and was very forceful in our deliberations, as it involved the land and the building that we committed to help and to, and to fund that issue. But there has been no movement. The program, the problem is getting monumental. And it's become a safety issue for the folk that come to do business with the county of Volusia. And when, when people enter your property, you become responsible from a financial standpoint, as it relates to insurance costs. So we have to do something. I am very, very sympathetic to the homeless population that we have here. But I'm also very sympathetic to the citizens that have worked hard to have a decent quality of life in Volusia County. And we, as we sit here to make major decisions that will help govern the quality of life for all of us, we are beginning to drop the ball, as it relates to homelessness. We can't do it by ourselves. I am of the opinion, Josh, that I don't want to see a fence put up there. But I think we have a judiciary responsibility to protect the folk that, that's doing business with us. Not only do we have a responsibility to defend, but someone needs to be there to monitor it. That costs money to the citizens of Volusia County. And I'm not seeing this kind of movement from the other cities that involve, Daytona Beach is, is right there, it's in the core. Now homelessness is all over. But I am willing to go with this 60-day standoff, if you will, as to whether or not we're going to do. But we have, we can't go any longer than that. We're going to have to just bite this ball and make a decision. It's not going to be pretty, it's not pretty now. It's not pretty. It's, it looks terrible if you're driving down Beach Street. Citizens are complaining, the businesses are complaining, and the ball seems to be in our court. Well, I'm tired of being totally responsible for something that, that is the responsibility of every person in Volusia County. And we represent much of that population. You may serve a district, you may be the chair, or you may be the large member, but at the close of the day, we're responsible. 60 days is as long as I think that we ought to, to deal with it. And in 60 days, Mr. Chair, I think we need to make a decision as to whether or not we will continue to do business at 850 Beach Street, which is, we have to do business there. Oh, we have to protect the folk that's doing business there. It's just that complicated and that simple. So I'm aboard with you, Josh, but know that in Votran, that's going to become another problem. Folk will begin to hang there. So you're talking two months, and we're going to have to bite this ball and make a decision. So we need to, somewhere somebody said to me, get ready, get ready, get ready, because it's coming. And we cannot continue to talk. We must act and stop trying to react to situations that are brought to us. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Kuzak. I do have one question, though, that may, that I think we all need to think about before we go, you know, even though we're going to go forward with this motion here. What do we do if Daytona says no? Do we have a Plan B?
Let me, let me, let me, can I address that?
Please, sir.
Here's what I think I'm hearing, okay? First, we all know that we put on the table the opportunity if the community would come together. That still stands, okay? Number two, I'm trying to give Daytona Beach, if they want to do what we did with Sunrail, or they want to do what we're doing with Hearst House, if they want to take it on, I have my doubts. I have my doubts, I tell you, on this study. I think Mr. Daniels is right on. But if they really want to take something on, what I was trying to say is we could modify our agreement to say, as long as we have that agreement and they really take it on and they'll backstop it like we did Sunrail, then I think why get in their way? In other words, if they want to do that, we let them do that. I guarantee you that if you want, I will have you a plan by next meeting. I think I should put together a plan. Let me look through all the details. I'll have a plan and I'll be ready to implement by the next meeting. But that plan will be for all these issues. I'll look where we would do this, how we would do it. I will let the city know that we're doing it. If I think I'm going to run into a legal issue, I'll talk to the county attorney. But I'm willing to do that. And here's the other thing. Clearly, we would wait to do any kind of fencing. Fencing's not cheap.
Oh, no.
Especially if we fence one area, we're going to have to fence quite a few. Well, not only you've got security issues, what really costs a lot is that people have to access that building. So, now you've got to have gates that work by card or card-activate. This gets into a lot of money. I think what Mr. Wagner was saying, which I'll see if the Council's okay with this, if in this period the city came up with their own interim plan, if you wanted to say, okay, you're going to make... You're going to take an effort and you've got a good interim plan, I would consider that if they wanted some little bit of capital money from us. The fact that we wouldn't have to fence, you could decide, because that's not a cheap option. You're probably... If I fence everything, you're probably into 200 grand, okay? That would be to do everything. But you're at least into 60 grand to do some of this. You could decide we could give them some of that money if they come up with a solution. But that'd be a capital thing. If that's the direction I have, I think I can make it clear to them, our original offer stands. If they want to take it on themselves, which I have my doubts, I think people do about it, but if they want to take it on, at least that would be their leadership, okay? Then we give them an option that way. The third way would be, I will... I'm going to continue to do the designs on the fencing so I know what it will cost, but we're not going to do anything, and I'll have a plan for you on this interim solution using whatever land we think is appropriate around Votran. We will come up with a plan from security and everything. I'll have it for you by next week, by next meeting. And a plan that we will be ready to implement.
And we need to... I think Mr. Wagner's correct. We need to come up with a Plan B just in case we get a no.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to address what Mr. Daniels said.
I don't want to...
I do think that once and for all, and Josh brought this up, too, I think I could have... I really think I need somebody else to help us, maybe a third party, maybe even our auditor to help us a little bit, to take a look at what funding's out there, because I'm not sure that that funding's available for some of these things. But once and for all, we could try to get a report that shows... Because in a lot of cases, Ms. Daniels, I talked about this, some of this funding goes to other agencies, which would mean, yes, you could use it for this, but they may have to stop doing what they're doing. And it gets into complications about who you fund and how you fund. But he's right. I think once and for all, to have a definitive report of where the money goes and what the opportunities or the roadblocks are to change that, the Council ought to know. Be willing to do that. And I'll add one more thing. I do think there's one other thing I can do. And once again, and this is the thing, don't forget, we keep doing everything. No one's giving us extra money on the Hearst House, but what we have there is a different kind of commitment, and the business community, which was part of this, of coming together with us, and they're putting money into it. The other thing I think I can do, and I think there are limits to what we can do, I can commit to having a special program for everybody that does the... That would be affected by the interim program. I'll make a commitment, and I'll have this in the program next... On the next meeting, that I'll try to come up with a special program for veterans, that we will actually try to make sure we've interviewed everybody that falls through the cracks. It's one of these people. Any veteran that wants help, then we will try to address their needs, because I think there's a different mechanism for that, and I think we have a different responsibility because of the Veterans Administration being here. That's a commitment on our part, because that'll end up coming out of general fund, too. But I think I can do that, because I think that's workable. Now, that's for veterans that want help. So, I can give you a plan. I'll do A is to keep what we had, B is to tell the city if they want to know that we're willing to modify it. If they want to sign an agreement, they'll take it on, okay? And C would be the interim plan, which is what Josh asked for, and then D, I'll add this thing on about veterans at the same time. And that way, I think on the 21st, I'll have something you can implement. If I run into a legal challenge, I'll have to go to the county attorney, but I'll have something, and then you can give it your blessing.
Are you not already preparing for veterans today?
We do a lot of stuff for veterans. We have all kinds of programs. I'm talking about one more step where we actually would actually intercede right with these people directly. Trust me, I can show you all kinds of things we do to prevent this, but I'm going to say, just in case somebody slipped through the cracks, okay, could happen, that I'll make one more attempt so that anybody that accesses those facilities, we'll try to talk to to see if there's any connection to being a veteran. It'd be one more step.
And every year, I'm with a couple of organizations, and we do what's called a stand-down. We bring in about 20 or 30...
I understand that. So, I'm just... I'd like to know, what are we not doing as it relates to homelessness for veterans in Volusia County?
I don't think we're not doing... I think we're doing everything that we can. This would be one more add-on, boots on the ground, of specifically going to these people themselves and saying, is there anybody that's a veteran? We think the programs we have are pretty good. I think you're going to find it's very few people that are veterans.
And most of the problem with the veterans is they don't know the services there, and being veterans, they like to kind of move out of the limelight a little bit, and they like to hide in the woods a little bit farther than the normal. So, it takes us about three months to find these guys.
Joyce, this would be just one more absolutely going out of our way to make sure. I'd add that into the program.
See, that part of the program ought to be in place as we speak today.
Well, we have it. This would be above and beyond anything we've ever tried. This would be a new initiative on top of everything. It'd be something that nobody else is doing. We'd do something even more.
All right. Mr. Wagner, you're next, but would you like to hold off until Ms. Denny's done? And then you can make your motion afterwards.
The only thing I won't support, from what I've heard, is you just added, well, we'll see what the fencing costs, and maybe we can add some capital dollars upfront. No. No. Absolutely not. This has been a standoff. It's pushing. They haven't put dollar one in, including code enforcement. So, for this council member, no capital dollars. We're sticking to our original plan. We will reimburse what they do. No dollars upfront. It's time for action and goodwill. So, and I... Hopefully, that's the message, Council, that we're going to send. We're in with good faith. We're in with $4 million. We're in today. We're in with action, and we're in with alternatives and making it work. But I promise you, I can... Those that are listening on the Internet went, okay, the Council's in. They're going to give us upfront money. It's a game changer. No. I'm staying with the original plan, Mr. Manager. I'll support everything else.
That helps me if you draw the line.
I will support everything else. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Wagner.
So, Jim, you would prefer, as far as the 60 days, you're saying, give you two weeks to come back with what a 60-day plan would mean?
Yes. I think you'd all feel better if I did that, and then you'd know what you're voting for. And then I'd have it on the agenda, too.
On the microphone.
Clarification. When do you anticipate beginning the 60 days?
I say, this would be my suggestion, to do it now, to give you direction to just do it, because these are very easy bullet points. And I could tell you, security's going to cost us anywhere from seven to 10 grand for the 60 days.
I would prefer... Now, I would prefer you let me give you the plan on the 21st and put it all together. I have to secure... Like, if we get portal lets, I've got to decide where they've got to be. I don't want this to... If we're going to do it, I don't want it to stumble into it and get criticized. I'd rather... And I want to make sure I don't have any legal challenges. I want to make sure I have thought it all out, and so I can have you a plan so you know. We've gone this long. Start the 60 days after the 21st, so that you all agree what we're doing.
Microphone, please, ma'am.
You're including possibly opening Votran.
Yeah, I'm going to look at exactly how we would do it.
Possibly.
Yes. There's other things I have to make sure on, federal regulations and all kinds of stuff. So, give me till that time, okay?
Okay, so...
So, you're talking 60?
Seventy-four days.
Plus 14.
Seventy-four days.
So, we're going 74, not 60.
Yes.
I just want to be clear. I want the media to be clear where we are.
So, in two weeks, you'll get with us.
Where the easy one is, in two weeks, they have 45 days. So...
Give me the 60.
I'm going 45. They're on notice right now. They are. They're on notice. I don't want to keep extending things. I'm not an extender. I want to shorten it.
We've got two news media here right now. I'm sure everybody's on notice right now.
I'll call the mayor. I mean, this is not... And let me repeat.
But Mr. Wagner...
I'm not doing this to be a jerk to the City Commission. I'm just trying to get us all together so we can get some decisions.
Mr. Wagner, what you're suggesting is the clock for the 60 days starts for the city. I will have you the plan of our implementation at the next meeting for the temporary. I can do that.
Give me the meeting dates. Let's just pick a meeting date.
That's the 21st.
No, no, I mean, let's...
Four days from today.
Yeah, whatever that meeting is.
Okay, 60 days from today is what?
March 3rd. March 3rd or March 17?
Yeah.
Let's do it.
March 3rd.
All right.
March 3rd.
I'm making a motion to... For the manager to come back with a plan by the next meeting that comes to a resolution on a short-term fix that could possibly be keeping Votran open. Legally, the way to do that would be to keep Votran open at night for people that are waiting to use the services next day. It's not a shelter. It's just that the facility's open 24 hours. There's your federal issue, if it was. And to also work with the city of Daytona Beach to come up with a contract similar to Sunrail that would fund and they would guarantee Safe Harbor in the manner you discussed on the record. In the meantime, no fence would be erected because we'd be utilizing the facilities. I think that's all I need, right?
And that's a motion. Is there a second to that?
Second.
Ms. Denny's would make the second, okay? Also, one before we go to vote, and speaking to this motion, of course, in major support, it's about time we... But we've got all the other 15 cities.
We left off one part. And at the end of the 60 days, our support of Volusia Safe Harbor would end. That's the only T.
And there is an amendment to the motion. Is there a second for the amendment to the motion?
I have a second.
I have a second for Ms. Kuzak. All those in favor of the amendment to the motion, please signify by aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, so carried unanimous. Now, let this be word to warning to all other 15 cities. This is the way it's going. We've got to... We're standing up and saying, we have a problem, and everybody has a homeless problem. Let's all work together. It's time. Without further discussion, all those in favor of the motion as stated by Mr. Wagner on the record and seconded by Ms. Denny's, please signify by aye.
Aye.
And all those opposed, so carried unanimous.